... order, please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please. Boss, present. Pipia.
Present.
Graham.
Present.
Hughes.
Present.
Frye.
Present.
Schroller.
Here.
Fromm.
Present.
Barnes.
Present.
We have a four, eight, okay. I had one amendment, so I just did it in red for everyone to see. Okay, give me one minute. Thank you. And it was, this was the only page I had an amendment to. I watched it on, on the website and decided I needed to add a couple things, so that's why. The red are the changes. Did you guys have any changes for the minutes? I would entertain a motion to accept as amended.
Move to approve the regular minutes of August 12th, 2019, minutes as amended.
Is there a second?
A second.
Is there any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? A no, thank you very much. Probably comments, if you are not on the agenda, you can come to the podium, you may speak for five minutes, and you give your name, your address, and your ward. All right. The first business and discussion item is a fire station. Clint Hibs is here for us.
So that both the public groups and the public can see the documents simultaneously. So, I appreciate the opportunity to be able to present today. My name is Clint Hibs, I am an architect at CDBG Consultants. One of the things that is a lot of fun in my career is being able to engage with communities such as yourself. So, we've actually had three meetings already with individuals from your community to really understand about fire stations. Now, to put some context into where we're at, we're trying to develop a grant pursuit effort for this new fire station through the CDBG process. Our firm has a lot of experience doing this, we understand the process, and are excited to be able to engage with Marysville in this particular process. I want to go through here today, being cognizant of your time, I want to take about 10 minutes just to go through the project, kind of where we're at presently, to kind of talk about the scope and what we're looking at, some budgetary components. And in that regard, I think we just want to begin just looking a little bit on the site. If you look at the site as it exists today, I believe it's 20th, where this is located, kind of next to and near the, do you want to step up here?
Perfect.
So, the new fire station located here is identified in red, where you can see to the, what would be the upper plan side to that to the right would be the out of ball field. That's in that location, the lower portion would be the drive that's on the Constance Street in that location, and then this would have direct access. What we're looking at doing with the building is setting it directly off of access from that street, and then providing paved, paving, parking or aprons in the front for the emergency vehicles, and then provide what would be support volunteer parking on the side, might be a gravel element, if you will. The access is all within the property of the space, what's identified in green, kind of a dark area, this is really the boundaries that we see for your extent of the site. The actual total site is slightly larger than that, but we're not looking at making any modifications to the perimeters of your ball field or anything of that nature. We want to stay shy of all of those features. The next element that I want to bring up to your attention is the building floor plan. So, as we begin meeting with the group, one of the things that we go through and take a lot of time to discuss is what's really needed in your facility to meet your needs. When you look at an emergency facility such as a fire station, you're really talking about public service, critical service, if you will, we call these critical facilities. For that reason, we need to make sure that we're designing these facilities to enable the quickest, fastest possible response time to your patrons, the community. So, in regards to this, we have a 9,000 square foot building. Out of this 9,000 square foot building, slightly over 6,000 square foot of that is dedicated just to the base, the apparatus equipment, as we refer to it, the fire trucks, and that other similar equipment. Those are accessible directly off of 20th, off of this side, off of the east, and then you'll notice there's also kind of a massing of a lot of spaces in here, in your smaller versions, and I put the text so small that if you have a magnifying glass, you might be able to read it tonight. But over here, what you'll see is that there's a core support restrooms and support spaces for the fire station. This is really focusing on the fire station service, the fire service. However, even though we do have spaces for that, which includes bases to extract and clean equipment, compressor rooms, storage rooms, and the like, we also have restrooms that are accessible to the volunteers. At the same time, we realize that the community can have an opportunity to have a resource room that can be located here. We consider this our community or training room location here, and it is appropriately sized for over 48 people, depending on how you configure that space, so you can have a nice gathering, get sufficiently gathered, all of us in there today if we so chose. And it also allows restroom access from that space, so that the public or those that are in training can have frequent and convenient access to the restrooms. Now, one of the things that we've also done is there's a communicating space. What I mean by communicating is you have the fire station kind of on one side, and you have what would be the support service side or the office side on the other. Between those two locations, we have this connecting link that includes a kitchenette, which can allow a lot of flexibility for how the fire can work within the site and how they may host public events to increase public awareness. It also allows an opportunity for space within here that can be used for meetings to also have that supplemental service, food. Now, there is an office location here at the front of the building, the idea is that typically you won't see somebody here stationed daily, all day long, but the thought is when somebody is there, that there is a public face to the building, a front entrance, if you will, and that would be located just in this location. Now, I do want to emphasize a few things about this building. It is a 16-foot-high building, if you will, that's the E height, and that means that we have 14-foot-tall doors. That 14-foot-tall door is sufficient for apparatus coming in and out. If you think about it, these doors are taller than what you would typically find on a highway bridge, so that gives you the understanding that this is sufficient room for your equipment, and we've located it so that every single bay structurally accommodates two different vehicles. There's also a depth within this building of 50 feet. Some of your equipment will very well occupy 40 by linear feet of space, depending on the size and the age of your equipment, some of it will be less. We do have areas in the back of the building that would occupy about 40-foot or 38-foot for different types of equipment, maybe like a bush truck, if you will. Now, I want to go through and share some perspective images. One of the things that we're looking at is a pre-engineered metal building. It's cost-effective, it's probably the best means of constructing a large space facility like this, especially for long-term service or fire station needs. That being said, we've explored a lot of different options with the group. As an architect, I've emphasized as far as the, everything we do graphically is a way to communicate, and so today I brought some ideas to communicate some possible what-ifs. Now, you may look at the colors, and I want us to kind of think today that the colors have not yet been established on the buildings, but the idea is the height of it, the general mass of the building, the location of doors and windows are things that we've discussed about with the group about allowing light into spaces, about allowing access into spaces, and so I've identified some neutral colors, a few pronounced spots of red, just to kind of celebrate this idea of a fire station. The building itself could modify greatly as far as the exterior appearance, depending on how we approach the planning aspect of the exterior. However, as you can see here, we've identified what would be kind of front-looking on the south end of 20th. If you were constantly at the corner of the street, as if you were about to enter onto the site, this location here, this is 20th, this is the curb, we have about 40 feet of depth. We talked about a modification in our last building meeting, pull the building a little bit further away from the fields. And you can see here are the bays with all of the open doors. This particular concept just simply shows a little bit of grays and neutral whites and a red accent. Again, I don't want us to get focused on color, but again, the idea of the massing. This is a very simple structure. What you'll notice here is that there's an opportunity, there's some gray accent in here, we can use different colors of panels. I just have metal paneling on the front to be able to have some sort of visual interest on the building. We also have some areas, you'll notice a little bit of concrete here. We're getting coordinated, or we're coordinating with Austin to get some information on the site through site surveying, and understand the exact specifics of the scope of the site. I'm going to talk about that a little bit when we're talking about budgets, but just want you to get a sense of what we're seeing here and a bit of the flow. So, this really resonates really well, I think, with the area, with what we see. We did explore the opportunity of putting masonry in the front, we'll talk about that somewhat, but you'll notice there's a little bit of red here. The thought was, you see this building, we keep it very simple, but we do a little bit of an accent in the space that allows us to celebrate just a portion of the building in a way that people can kind of get a sense of it as a fire station. Now, maybe that we make the entire building red, and we communicate in that way. Another alternative is to strategically place colors, branding elements and features that allow us to communicate perhaps the use of the building, but also abstractly identify perhaps where the front entrance of the building is, or the main public site. Over here, you'll notice this is looking basically on the north end, looking a little to the southwest. You'll notice right here, the idea is that the main public entry area is a little bit more celebrated, there's some signage in there, a cover allowing the door to the entry, very simple, basic construction. You can also get a sense of a little bit of the corner of the light pole, that's about 13 feet away from the corner of that building, gives you a sense of context and scale. Some bushes were shown just for aesthetics. I don't know that that's something you'd want, it's really easy just to mow a green strip, so that might be a better solution, or to have a gravel, but the idea is to pave this area where the fire apparatus would come in and out. I refer to fire apparatus as the equipment, the vehicles that move in and out, and then you could gravel parking on the side for the staff. Now, in looking at the building, the thought is that there's a number of items we can consider when we try to understand the cost. And so, as we begin to look at the preliminary probable costs, again, we're just now, as of the last meeting began, really trying to touch on the idea of massing to the building. We're just starting to explore what costs might look like. Generally, at this phase, stage, we will be a little bit higher on cost, we're just trying to build in that contingency of room. We're higher than we want to be at this point in this project, we want to be able to rein this in a little bit. You'll notice that we have a total project cost of about 1.210. The idea is to get as close to 1 million as possible. The reason for that, CDBGs with a full grant can match up to $600,000. So, the idea is that if you can have a 50-50 match, that can be really ideal. The community can always go beyond that, but what we're trying to understand is the basic scope, and the way we develop this is we work with a lot of fire stations, we have three under construction right now, and have had many that have been under construction in the past, we were referencing some cost per square foot values. These numbers reflect a little bit of a difference from what was shown to the committee earlier because what I've added through in our last meeting is not 2019 numbers, as if we were to bid this out November this year. This is 2020 values, as we look forward, without the adjustment of some of the specifics, because we have to find, how are we heating the space? Are we going to use tube heaters, radiant tube heaters, are we going to use fans, those other things? Those will all impact the cost, you can control that. But, to give you a sense of the line items, general conditions, basically what it takes for the contractor to mobilize on site, there's some general costs that are associated with that, we just kind of have a lump sum for that right now, generally about $1.67 per square foot of a building. That adjusts really quite a bit. Right now, we're working with square foot numbers. As we work with the grant writer and administrator, we're actually going to be defining that in more detail, we're starting to do that now, that'll hone these budgets in, so they're not quite as arching or overarching in reaching. Now, foundations and floor, these elements come in about $17.25, so they give you a sense per square foot of that value. Building structure, a lot of your cost is in your building structure, that's the actual building model of itself, the door is enclosed, the metal building. The other big key item for cost is the building systems. We really want to understand this building system, to be able to understand the scope of work that's needed on the building, and then right now, we have a site cost allowance, this can vary down, it can vary up depending on the complexities of the elements of the site. The idea that we're looking at is building into the site, so that we kind of nestle the building into it, nest it in, and we can take advantage of that, so there's some benefits in doing so. Now, I mentioned these totals before, just in referencing more to the key item of the total of the building itself, and the site and design, but if you look at the building itself, it's about $983,000. It's about $109 a square foot, give or take, just for building construction alone. When you add site into it, expand that idea to figure out what a cost per square foot is, if you take 9,000 square foot, you would actually end up with a total cost of, well, for the site, it's about $100,000, but right here, we're looking at 1.18, and then what we've done is we've simply factored, the state of Kansas has a defined factor that you CDBG, there's this factor that you use based on a certain cost. We've allocated a 7.4%, this would include all services, aid, design, bidding, procurement, and so forth, infrastructure administration, with a total of the 1.27. This would be full package cost, excluding things like furniture, so like if you were going to put furniture in there, buy new, we want to allocate how we would do that, if we're relocating, or if we want to add some planning into this to do that. A couple items, just to give you a sense of flexibility, because some of you might be asking, well, what if, you know, we have a lot of brick in Marysville, we'll put some brick on the front side. There's some quick numbers to pull up an idea like brick veneer, public side lounge, would be about $7,000, to give you a sense of what we could do with scoping. Another thing we looked at was, what if, what if we were able to control the traffic signalization further south on 20th? So, if we were to do that, the signalization itself, because I believe you have a newer system, and there would be about $8,000. Really, it's about the remotest, about the controller. Now, we did also talk about the idea is what if, we controlled 20th up at the location of the station, so that the fire apparatus, when they need to respond, they can immediately mobilize, and vehicles will be able to notice stop on the site. That was a little bit more expensive, I'm trying to pull the cost of understanding it about, about $82,000, is about the full system, put all the pieces in, the traffic stopping elements and everything in that place. That does not include $8,000, so those are two separate pieces. And I think that another component we have in there, we have concrete ballards and other factors we can look at. One thing we're exploring is to understand how much parking, do we want to, you know, do we want to understand how much does that cost for gravel versus concrete, so on, and so forth, but wanted to give you just a brief update to the scope of the project to date. We are in the process of moving towards another meeting on the 6th of September. During that meeting, we're hoping to get to a point where we can start beginning to plan forward to a public hearing time, there'll be a time where we go to the public, present this information in like a town hall setting, if you will, as part of the CDBG process, and we're also looking at trying to get all of the costs wrapped up and understood very clearly. The September 6th meeting will be critical by September 20th, so that Emily Benedict, the community development representative, can start infusing that data into the actual submitted CDBG report. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, these ballards, are there red ballards on there that are in those pictures?
Yes, I had those identified as red ballards. I think they're about, like if the contractor installs them, they're about $800 a square each, because by the time you get the ballards installed, install them, I think they can be installed for less, but right now, that's the factor we have in place for them.
Did you guys want those firemen, did you want the ballards? I can't remember us discussing that.
Yeah, it'd be nice.
Okay. Do you guys, the three firemen, do you three firemen want to come up and share anything with the council about this process, if you like it, if you don't like it, if there's anything you think we really need to focus on that we missed? Is there anything you want to say? Okay, don't all jump at once. The main thing I want to communicate to council is that you guys have been really involved, integrally involved with this, and so is this the plan that you expected him to show the council? Okay.
I think it's fine tuned, good.
You what? I'm sorry.
I think it's fine tuned, good.
Okay.
Two questions, if that's all right. I'm kind of late to the game on this. One is, should we be at all worried that there's not room for future expansion if equipment gets bigger, if equipment changes? Is there any kind of plan for that? I only wonder because on the south side, I think it's kind of at the edge of the property area.
You are correct, and that is an excellent question. We have talked about the idea of expansion on the building. When it does come to the south, and I do pause on a full list for the audience as well, the south side of the site, we are at the furthest extents of where we would be able to build here. We're utilizing current zoning setbacks, but however, one of the key items that we've done in our most recent adjustment is if you can see where this line of the fence of the ball field is at in the lining, you'll notice that there's a distance there, about 11 feet, I mentioned before. So, we're aligning this so that in the future, beyond being able to expand, we were planning on 40-foot depth. What's shown here, there's a little black square, the idea was to show that that would be two bays, if you were to just do like, think about EMS, if you were to expand that way. Now, if you expand larger truck, perhaps, a ladder truck, something of that nature, you would be able to extend and should be able to actually fit that in there and realign this furthest, will be west edge of the building, and be able to make that expansion need. It's a great question, and this site, I think, is very conducive to that. I will say, however, that in doing so, future expansions, I think beyond probably these two bays, maybe another 30 feet, I do think you'd be looking at a building step toward the, the buildings could communicate with one another, maybe through being able to walk and, you know, through a door and be able to step down through some steps, but this area, the road really does kind of rise a little bit, and so that's given long enough that we definitely want to plan for that. This building, incidentally, right now is about 180 foot in length, to give you some sense of context. It's also very hard to see this because I completely covered it up mostly, so that it would be kind of incognito and hidden, but there is a little bitty, I believe, is it the tinscore, that's right here?
Basketball.
Basketball, okay, yes, I didn't pay that much attention to it, but I did see it was on there, and then we ended up covering it up, so it gives you a sense of kind of where we're, where we're connecting in that zone. Really nice location for this facility, I think, in that context. Great question.
The only other question I had was, I know a lot of fire stations have flagpoles or things in front to kind of decorate it, for lack of a better term. Has that been considered at all?
You know, we have not discussed a flagpole. I do believe, though, it's something that I've explored when I was preparing renderings for it, we don't have it rendered on here, but it would be certainly, I think, appropriate to plan for addition of a flagpole, kind of in this front zone, somewhere on the site, which is very commensurate with that, and is certainly not a budgetary issue when you incorporate one of those with a concrete bays and then a extruded metal form.
So, now, the prices that you have here, the costs here are with all gravel in front of the building, and all gravel to the north, and pavement for all the bays. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Right, and so, again, I did want to emphasize at the schematic design phase that, it's one of those things where it's interesting, because like I mentioned before, when we show renderings, we're trying to communicate an idea, it's how we're communicating, right? It's not just in a written word. This is doing somewhat a similar thing, right now, we're sort of two numbers, but we think, you know what, this is probably where you'd be on the higher end if we look at getting into specifics, as we start talking about the actual finishes. We've started talking about the space on the inside, finishing it out in a very simple, low-maintenance way, so for example, some things that are going to probably adjust these numbers just a little bit are, that we'll be using a sealed concrete floor, for example, in lieu of having carpeting or VCT or LVT, a luxury vinyl tile, that you might have in there. They're great products, but there's a little bit more maintenance. We're seeing a trend in a lot of these fire stations to have that distilled concrete, because it's just really easy to maintain, you know, you wash it and maintain it that way, it lasts for a very long time.
And again, he did a really good job of pointing out, anything that we spend up and above 1.2 million, we pay all of it, because the max is 600,000, so, but you know, I think, you know, we've discussed that the traffic control is really something we have to do on 20th Street with the traffic that we have, so we'll have to build that into the cost. And of course, we are going to need furniture. Like, I guess when you had interior, I guess, I guess it had some of that, so we'll have to add that.
Yes, and so, you're exactly right, we were planning on, the idea is probably tables and chairs that you want to plan, and again, just to emphasize that, one of the things that we do is that there may be times where we're going towards a market, since we're also kind of projecting towards the year 2020, we'll actually get into details and understand what, sometimes these things that we call optional are not included, or even these numbers will call, will create what's called alternates. That's something we've done a lot with both CDBG and USDA, so that there's certain things that might be like, you know what, it'd be incredible if we could get this, you know, on-site instead of this, or in addition to this, and then when the market comes in, it becomes very favorable, you have the opportunity of buying, purchasing power with that value to be able to pull in some things that come in competitively with your budget.
What kind of roof do we have on? I know a metal roof, but a non-glare roof or a panel that will absorb it, you know, with the ball field right there, I was one of those fielders out there, you know, looking, sun reflecting back towards you.
Yeah, so we're trying to get some great YouTube moments, but no. The audience is on that side, we're going to look at, I believe we talked about a lighter roof, it was brought up in our meetings that to not have a really light-colored roof. Sometimes, we'll try to get a lighter-colored roof, just to control heat gain inside the building, and they're metal buildings, so they do gain heat. In this sense, it would be just a, what we would consider an R-panel, exposed fastener roof, but it would probably be of a color that would be darker, so that it would tend to not reflect as much, and depending on the kind of, I'm sorry, the paint finish, we can control that sense of color, because that really is, it's going to be an issue considering, you know, you're playing in the evening times, you're talking about westerly, mostly light reflection in there. I don't believe that should be an issue in this case, especially since we're looking at a kind of a darker roof color.
David brought that up, that concern.
He did too.
That kind of brings to mind, I know, since Austin's come on board here, energy efficiencies and things have been a consistent concern of ours, is this taking any kind of energy efficiency considerations into account? I mean, well, that large roof kind of would make me tempted to try to find some ways to use it, as far as solar or otherwise.
Certainly, so, you have, because of the slope of the roof, this location, orientation of the building, one of the things that we find is that buildings that orient themselves in an east-west axis are really ideal for that. Now, one that's oriented north-south, nothing wrong with that, it just has a different way of approaching. It can certainly be designed and planned for that in the future, we did not plan for that here, I will say, however, partly just because of what we're looking at with our budget, we have worked on like, for example, LED lighting throughout the building, very low-cost, very efficient, all the fixtures and plumbing, mechanical equipment, all of those things will also be efficient as well as the thermal envelope for all of the building. So, what I mean by that is it's not going to be just a metal building, it's going to be a metal building, it's going to have insulation in it, so its performance material will be well. I do think there's opportunities, like when you look at the exterior of the building, to be able to capture some, some perhaps renewable energy advantages in the future as well, and those can certainly be added in without any compromise to your building functionality.
So, can we, as an alternate, or as an, as an option, basically set the building up prepared for solar panel, if we want to do that in the future? For instance, reinforcing the roof right where you need to put the panels, and wiring the panel, so it's ready, rather than having to have an electrician come back in and set the panel on?
Yes, we can plan for that at this stage, and we can also, we saw it really get related to energy, however, I don't know that it's come up in the discussion that we've had, however, you can also plan for emergency power, if for some reason you have an emergency in the community and you need just kind of like, you know, emergency operations centers for a short period of time, this could also be sufficiently planned for that, using those other kind of forms. You basically have it as an alternate, you can add it in easily, it's planned for that. We've also been talking about different types of mechanical systems inside, for example, radiant heating in the floor, that's a very efficient way to heat a building, but looking at the logistics of that versus radiant tube heat, which is above the air, based on cost, and some of those things right now, we'll be able to get some cost value in comparisons in, that's really part of our next step, to define that and kind of bring that, that piece in, into the building.
So, are you guys all ready to go onward? Okay, and you guys are all in, firemen?
We're ready to go. Onward.
We have not, no. So then, the question was, if we've discussed figures for generator, we don't have a cost for the generator, I do have that value, so I can pull from other stations that were just originally completed in comparison to the size of this facility, that we can also show to the group, what we mean next.
Okay, and Terry, I believe, had a question.
Yeah, I know in cities where they have in-house fire departments, they have cooking facilities and stuff, if you're talking about this 48-deal meeting room, I don't see any place where they could like have a kitchen.
Yeah, that's a good, good observation, and you are correct, we do not have a commercial kitchen planned at this time for the facility. What I mean by that is, we have a kitchen that is defined by having, you know, a kitchen counter, it'll have potentially a stove top in there, and dishwasher, and refrigerator, so that you're, did I mention microwave? So that you can kind of do some basic serving to the group, but it's not a large facility. Now, we can plan for that in some places. We have actually used this large training room, and we've said, look, let's put it within one edge of the training room, so that it's kind of open that space, and others, we have defined a specific area that is very much dedicated. I think this building also gives you the flexibility, especially if you do look at modifications to how you utilize your staff in the future, depending on that need and growth, you can always do some of that expansion, can also cap- growth, you can always do some of that expansion, can also capture, I think, some of those needs, you know, like if you have people that are staying the night, and granted, you may have somebody that just intermittently might just be staying late just because they're out late at night, you know, and they just, you know, maybe they're driving far from home, when they, when they're done, they may just want to stay the night, but if you have people that are recurring in the evening, we would plan for you to anticipate building into space or rooms, day rooms for those individuals. This is meant to be kind of a dual day room and training and meeting room, if you will.
And Clint, we did talk about possible second-floor storage over the meeting room area.
Yes, and there is possibility of having mezzanine storage above those portions of the building that are located here.
One other question, you're talking about where the big figure was, about trying to control traffic and that, is it really going to be simple about, we've got nine doors, you just push a button and all nine goes up, or is it going to be a complicated?
For the door control, that's a great question. That can actually be set in many different ways, depending on how we approach the project, so it can be set to where the doors will go up individually, or if you have an event and you just, everyone needs to be able to get in, you have volunteers come in, you need all be able to go out, mobilize, you can have it where all of these open at the same time. So it really kind of depends on how we want to control that. That's an excellent question.
Okay.
One more question. The concrete in front of all the bay doors, is that including a lay-down curb at the street, or is that not including the lay-down curb?
It does, it does not include, well, I'm sorry, the cost does include all of those components in there, I just didn't break out in detail on the separate line item, this curb right here.
Yeah.
Yeah, it'd be that lay-down rollover curb, that's the antenna of what you have along that length. We'd also anticipate possibly having one more of these elements, but a shorter stretch, maybe 26 feet or 30 feet, that would be right in front of the gravel area, so that the volunteers or anyone that's visiting the site could be able to pull on a location other than directly on the apron, if so desired. We've not yet talked about that in detail with the group, we begin to explore, I have begun to explore that outside.
Any other questions?
Yes.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. My intent is to take the information you've shared, the questions, and infuse that in our discussions with the group, and I'd be glad to leave, as I said, or I can leave all of these here if it's desired, I don't know.
Do you want to leave the city?
Sure, yeah, we'll take them.
Just all of them?
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you so much.
Well, they might want to, you might want to send a fireman. Yeah. All right, thank you. Thank you so much.
We have a whole collection.
That's what you said. All right, thank you for coming, Clint.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, the next.
I'm going to take these back.
All right, the next item is ordinance 1883. It's on page 11. It was about the rezoning. Dave, did you respond to that email I sent you about that future land use map?
I did when you was in there, but you left.
Okay. Do you, you just, is that just standard?
It's standard, plus that is for the future.
Yeah, did you look in that, the comprehensive plan?
So in the future land map and the comprehensive plan, they had plans to put that all into our two, so.
Right, right, so we're not really changing that, but anyway.
Well, we're doing what it actually says to do.
Yeah, we're.
Yeah, we're updating the future plan on that.
Yeah.
Basically what that's doing, I think that's why that's in the sentence that way.
Okay, so that was my only question. Do you guys have any questions about that ordinance, or Dave, is there anything you want to say?
No, we're just, funding commission approved this, send the recommendation to you guys. You got the map again, did you?
Yep.
Everybody, okay. So that's what's being changed up there.
All right.
Moved to approve ordinance number 1883, amending the comprehensive plan. And unified land development.
Okay, ULDC, okay. Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Boss?
Yes.
Tiffia?
Yes.
Graham?
Yes.
Hughes?
Right.
Yes.
Schroller?
Yes.
Throm?
Yes.
Ayo.
All right, thank you very much. The next item is Chief Ackerman, about hiring two police officers.
Coming for you tonight, we have one open slot from Joe from the spring, we've been trying to fill. I kind of explained that in the papers I had delivered to you, the first couple paragraphs talked about how we writing one through one hiring processes and the second process, we do have two viable candidates at this time to hire. Tyler's resignation is also in that packet for you, so that will give you two open slots. And then James Lee's got a phone call this morning, so it's a good chance we're going to do that pretty quick, or two, so we'll have a third, we will have to reopen again, though, to try to find somebody to fill the third slot by then. The two candidates we have have passed everything that we've done, we've done polygraphs, the backgrounds, the standard testing for police officer candidates for the state of Kansas, and they both passed those as well. So we're looking, looking to ask to fill not only the one slot, to go ahead and hire the other one to fill the second slot, we know is coming open at the end of the month. They're both with us here tonight, and the gentleman that we're looking to hire, Mr. Grant Cook, can't start till November, in November anyway, so we'll be well into that time. You do get, she wants to stand up so you can see who you are, I guess. This is Grant Cook, and this is Nicole Tillery, are the two other candidates that we're looking at right now. And Grant has his fiancee with him, they're getting married in November, and he has vacation coming at his current job, and kind of wants to take a honeymoon and get married, so that's kind of why we're waiting till November for him.
Makes sense.
Yeah, because we have a whole year before he gets vacation here, so.
Did Tyler, once we sent him to the academy, they have to work how many years, and did Tyler meet that?
It's a 30-month, he has completed the contract, we are at a contract with Tyler. Yes. That's one, first things we look at.
Yeah, I knew there was something in that, I know that if they don't meet that, then they pay it back, right?
They do, or agencies do, we bought contracts, people paid for our contracts before as well.
Okay.
Just getting to be back up there to try to find people.
All right, and the only other thing I was asking, I, you know, I read in the highlights that you, you had the interviews, didn't the, didn't last time, wasn't the police committee involved with the interview?
We used two of the police committees, the kind of the atmosphere now across the nation is, you know, using an outside person that doesn't have any ties to the city whatsoever, again, then they can see what we're looking for in police officers. We all know, because we've been through it, but then they bring somebody from the outside, and that's why we did the same thing, kind of get an outside perspective.
Diane, weren't you on the committee last time?
One time.
Was that just the last time we hired somebody?
Yeah, see, that's the only time we ever used the police committee, was that one time?
Normally, you don't.
That was the only time we had.
Okay.
To be honest, the last time that they were on it was the first time we started to do an oral board like that. We had never done that before, it's just another step we have added to take a look at the candidate better.
Okay, okay. Well, I'm glad you have two candidates. At this point in time, you just want us to approve the hiring of those two officers?
Yes, and Ms. Tillery can start before Mr. Cook, and then Mr. Cook will be in November after his completion over in Worce, he works for the Worce County Sheriff's Department this time in the jail.
Oh, great.
And they both live in Marysville.
So she'll go, once you hire her, she'll go to the academy for 14 months?
Yes, we sent in the paperwork, and they tell us, they'll give us the date, and like Mr. Cooks, they'll give us the date, it could be six months out, but then if they have more openings coming up, they'll ask to move, we could move Ms. Tillery, but we would not be able to move Mr. Cook, because I just have to call the director, and he'll say, okay, this is why, we don't want him till after November, and they'll keep it out.
Okay, great.
So we were just looking for, so basically, if you had any issues with us hiring more than one, because we only have one slot open, so we're trying to, we're just trying to make sure you guys are okay with this, rather than coming back saying, hey, we hired two people, and then have you guys have a problem with it, so we just want to make sure you guys didn't have any issues with us thinking ahead.
Because Tyler's not leaving till when?
October 5th is his last official day, and I say Mr. Cook isn't, he won't be on the payroll till after November anyway.
Yeah, so it all works. So we just want to make, yeah.
We will actually give an actual beginning date as a hire date in November.
Right.
Okay, and then James Lee's, you don't know when he's?
I don't know yet, he is going down to speak to an agency, I know, he is actually taking a cruise here on Friday, so.
Well, good for him.
That's what I thought, yeah. He'll get back this week, next week, I guess.
And so you had another candidate that couldn't possibly fill his spot as well?
No.
No.
It's, they're married. One of our candidates, and we had a husband-wife team several years ago, and between scheduling and other things, it did not end well, and it was the prior chief had done that, and we're not that large of an agency that we can afford that.
Okay, okay. Well, I know you put down about that, you wanted to discuss about raises, and so we'll send that to the committee and discuss that, because it seems, looks like we need more information about that, but I think, I think it's definitely worth doing.
What information more do you need? I mean, I'll need to know what information you need.
But additional, well, I guess to analyze what you gave us and to try to figure out, to get, I guess, to, more than anything is to get the benefit stuff analyzed and things like that, because you gave us a list of this, but there's really not comparing us to all of them.
Now, that list you have there in your hand is from the other list right behind it. We went, Austin asked for additional things, so you recalled all the agencies, that list you have is what the additional agencies had to offer, so it's not anything additional city-wise, it's just additional benefit-wise.
Yeah, well, I think we should definitely have that discussion, and, you know, the sooner the better, and. So, what we'll do is we'll go ahead and hire these two, we can certainly look at all this, both benefits and the salary side, and decide how to adjust it.
Yep, I can make sure we're at the next council meeting, that's no problem.
Okay, so we'll just make sure we get a committee meeting in the next couple of weeks?
In the next couple of weeks, okay.
Okay.
Thanks, sir.
All right, thank you. All right, the next item is the one-way street, and there's just slight notifications on your desk for all three resolutions, and really, it was just changing, adding the sentence, installation of temporary one-way traffic and, so that it would be one-way traffic and signs. And I guess the one on, Cindy clarified to me that what we're doing is we are restricting parking on the, so we changed it a little bit, to restricting parking on the east side of Broadway to Elm, which will be consistent with Elm to Walnut, so.
I've written it the opposite way, that you could park on the west side. We're just going to say you can't park on the east side.
Yeah, so we decided just to say it that way, so the first resolution is regarding the one-way on 11th Street, do you guys have any comments on that? Otherwise, I would entertain a motion to approve that.
Move to approve resolution 2019-3, one-way street on 7th, or on 11th, excuse me, with no parking on the east side.
All right, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Is there any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, 8-0, the next one, if I have it right, is 04. Again, I only added authorizing temporary one-way traffic, and did you guys have any changes to that?
I just have one question on that.
Okay.
So they will be able to park left wheel to curb?
Yes.
On those, on the block?
Yeah, that's legally how you can park, yes.
Okay, just, I had somebody ask me about that, and I wanted to clarify here.
As long as they're going with traffic, they'll be legal.
Okay.
For this temporary time.
So we're making it one-way, so every, all the parking is going to be on the west side?
No, on both sides.
No, on both sides.
It's going to be on both?
Yeah, you can park left wheel to curb.
That's why I said left wheel to curb.
Oh, both sides on 12th, I see, because we're only going to put, there's no buses there, they're all cars.
Yeah, all vehicles, all smaller vehicles.
Okay, so traffic on both sides is going southbound?
Yes.
Okay, well, that's good, we'll need that traffic, that parking.
Parking, yes.
Okay, good question.
I moved to approve resolution number 2019-04, temporary authorizing one-way traffic on 12th Street.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? 8-0, all right, and the next one is one-way, just that one block on 0 between?
Yeah, 11th and 10th and 11th.
Yeah, although it's funny, you wrote 11th and 10th, because that's how the one-way is going.
That's where I have to go.
That was very smart, I figured that.
It's crazy.
Okay, did you guys have any questions on that?
Move to approve resolution 2019-5, temporary one-way traffic on Oak Street from 11th to 10th.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? 8-0, all right, and do we have a lot of one-way signs?
We just, we got them in last week.
We did? Okay, I was just like, we got a lot of one-way.
We ordered in preparation, so.
Okay, and they didn't jackhammer anything up today?
They were sawcutting a lot of things.
Oh, okay.
Yep.
And so what is the plan?
To continue to do that west side, they are going to close tomorrow, or at least that's what our engineers were talking, close Walnut, because the bus drivers were having issues with smaller, the smaller vehicles rushing by them, so no access, I believe, starting tomorrow on Walnut, coming from 10th Street.
Okay, except for the people coming northbound, they can get?
From 11th, yeah, from 11th.
Oh, from 11th. Oh, not from the highway at all?
Not the highways will be shut.
You can get hold of Candy Y or something and have them announce it.
Hey, Bruce. He's right there.
Thank you, Bruce.
Okay.
They'll know when it's closed.
All right.
When it's closed, they'll know.
When it's blocked, then they can't go that way, they'll know it.
Yeah, it's going to be a lot of work. Okay, one other thing I want to bring up about business and discussion items, we had the discussion last week about the Spitznoggels, and that the assessment of the 5848, and after the meeting, I really thought about, you know, often they want us to think about economic development, and, you know, making strides to do that, we really do want to encourage that development, we want them to be annexed in Marysville. They do have to have a lift station put in, because we haven't completed the sewer from that manhole going east, so they're, because we haven't done the second infrastructure improvement out there, they have to put that lift station in, which is going to cost them about $7,000. So I started thinking, you know, we, we, and the third part of that, so I say, part of it is because we have a, they have a cost that we haven't, because we haven't completed the infrastructure, and second, we have paid off that debt, that $3.8 million was paid off in 2018. So I'm just thinking from an economic development standpoint, that we want them to build, we want them to annex into the city, we want to bring those property values into the city, and I think we need to reconsider that.
I have a problem with doing it wrong, with skipping the one, I mean, the one vacant lot, unless we charge the, that property owner for that, for that lot.
I'm not saying, I'm just saying going forward, even that lot, and probably the lot adjacent to it, will probably be built out before we put the other infrastructure in, and they'll have to buy that lift station because of that.
And what did the other people pay down there?
Well, the other people pay, well, it depends how you look at it, see, it's a kind of a complex thing, because, for instance, the two people that live on the north side, the two most recent houses, or houses built on the north house, north side were part of the Ring Estate, and they paid one, Ring Estate paid one 5848 for all 40 acres, and And so when Crofts built their house and Temps built their house, they didn't have to pay the 5848, because one was paid for the whole 40 acres of the Ring Estate.
So they had actually bought property, so the cost was all from the Ring Estate, that's why they didn't have to pay it. I guess my point is, and I don't know if anybody else looks at it like this, what's gonna happen next? We don't make, we make an exception, we're gonna make an exception here. This is gonna snowball. You know, we're always talking about keeping the money flowing into the city, I realize economic development, but are people gonna come back to us and demand their money back? You made us pay. When we decided to build out there, are you gonna give us our money back? Are you just gonna go ahead and, you know, give us complete break on our taxes for x amount of years to make up for that?
Well, I'm just thinking from an economic development standpoint, that we want to encourage them to annex into the city. They do have to pay the $7,000 for a lift station, because we don't have adequate sewer, we don't have the appropriate sewer to make it gravity-fed. And when you, you know, they're gonna build probably, I'm just guessing, probably a $300,000 house that will go on our tax revenues.
Again, the other people that have paid these costs, they have every right to be angry. You know, I mean, it's, it is a very kind thought, and it's a very good thought, but the devil in one hand, and, you know, devil in the other.
Well, you guys want to possibly take it to the water sewer committee and discuss it further?
I don't see any need to do that myself. I have a problem with not assessing an infidel. I think it's a bad precedent to set from here forward, that nobody else is gonna wanna pay an assessment from here on out.
Well, I would think that if we, it would be a no-brainer if we had the infrastructure in for the second phase, because we would be, because they wouldn't have to have the grinder pump, and they could just go and pay that assessment for the sewer that works for them.
Well, remember this afternoon when I was asking Kent about my nearest connection to the sewer, since I'm on the private, I would have to pay for one block to put in to connect to the sewer. I would have to pay it. Did he give you a price?
Well, so none of you guys think it, like, from an economics and development standpoint, that we need to encourage development out there?
Economically, if they turn around, if somebody turns around and sues the city and said, hey, I want my money back, you charged us X amount of thousands of dollars, and then I have a neighbor that you haven't charged, now it's economic development, before it was just, you're gonna pay it or else.
Well, they were part of the east, they agreed to be part of the east-side sewer district, and they agreed to pay it before we put the infrastructure in.
Splitting hairs, splitting hairs. I just feel like we don't want to do things wrong, because so many have been done incorrectly with Keystone and some of those developments out there, that.
You talking about the streets, or what are you talking about?
No, I'm talking about the way.
It was wrong, in my opinion, to write it in such a way that you could have 40 acres and pay one assessment, and then put 10 houses on it.
Well, that's what she talks about.
And that wasn't right.
See, and the other way to look at it is that, in the Keystone addition, it was the same situation, where they paid one for all of that housing. So when you go right across the street, they paid one for that whole, all the, for what, 120 homes that were supposed to go in there? Then you go across the street to the north, and Rings paid one for 40 acres.
Yeah.
Again, it was done before us, it was determined in 2000, and then the final assessment was in 2002.
I'm not for it. And I'm afraid, and it's just because somebody's gonna squeal, somebody's gonna be upset, and they have a right to be upset. They have a right to be upset, because it looks like we're taking, you know, okay, we're gonna let these kids do this, and it's nice, it's great, I'm glad they can do this, I'm glad they can build a $300,000 home, I'm glad they can do that, but there's other people with $300,000 homes out there that have paid it.
Well, when you go across the street and they didn't have to pay it, that's a hard pill to swallow.
Well, that's, we didn't do that. What we're trying to do now is make up for the mistakes that were made before. That's the point is always at this table, is we're not trying to take money away from the city. Now, yeah, they're gonna pay taxes, we'll get a certain part of the taxes, fine, but I just, for me personally, I can't speak for anybody else here, I say no. And the couple does have other options.
You mean?
With lots. I mean, quite a few lots available.
Well, we, okay.
Madam, ma'am?
Yes.
I have a question. The whole deal on that south side of the street, why hadn't we, why didn't the city complete the sewer project to begin with, instead of having to have some kind of a pump station to take care of one now, until eventually we decide to do it? Why wasn't that taken care of before they built over there?
Well, I think the, Dave, do you want to come to the podium?
There's millions of dollars to do it again.
I don't think they go for the reason that's sort of.
Yeah, I think that.
You're talking about the lift station now in Keystone. That's the, that's the original plan, was to bring the Keystone sewer all the way up into the Ring property. Am I saying that right? Yep, all the way up into the Ring property.
And we haven't done that part yet.
No, because of the lack of development in the Keystone addition.
But why don't we get it completed, then it will all be taken care of, and then the price would be according to who did buy it.
I think it was because we don't, we, I mean, not the houses that we're, it didn't pan out how it was supposed to.
Yeah, they were supposed to be.
The original promises of, how many houses were supposed to be out there.
And there were other people who bought grinder pits. There were other people who bought grinder pits, had to buy them, that are along that east, that also paid the 58. They all had a lot of them.
So other people?
Oh, yes, absolutely.
Okay, okay. All right, we will continue on, we won't do anything on that at this time. Notices and hearings, is there anything? Consent agenda, we don't have a consent agenda. Appropriations ordinance number 3705?
Move approved appropriation ordinance 3705.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Okay.
I would like to give the large items.
I was waiting for you.
Our citizens should be informed. We paid, will pay with this consent agenda, the swimming pool lease in the amount of $279,865, and make a breeding heights loan payment of $24,689. And payroll and health insurance comes to $92,924.
And we had transfers in the rate, did you say the radios, about the police radios?
No, I didn't.
Okay.
Because we've got, getting a grant for that.
Yeah, $46,000 that we're paying out now.
I think 2,000, we're, 2,000, 46,000 of that will be grant, and then 2,000 is the difference that we'll have to pay.
Isn't it completely covered, Tom?
It's 100% grant.
100% grant.
Oh, and it's a reimbursement program.
Yeah, reimbursement, yeah, it's 100% covered by the grant.
Oh, well, in the, in the statement I looked at, it had, had this 46,000.
For the radios, it should be 100%.
There was something else that was added to it.
Oh, something was added that didn't, the grant didn't cover?
No, I thought it was in addition to. I'd have to go find this in the box.
Okay, that $46,000 for the radios.
For the radios.
Okay. We have a, we have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Boss?
Yes.
Dipia?
Yes.
Graham?
Yes.
Hughes?
Yes.
Frye?
Yes.
Schroller?
Yes.
Drum?
Yes.
8-0.
All right. First thing up on my report, a Lee Dam Art Center window bid request. I included that bid request in here, it includes some specs that I got from one of our local window suppliers, so I can get the exact of what we want on the building, rather than kind of me kind of putting words together and missing a step here and there. So I wanted to make sure everybody knew, who had bid on this project, knew exactly what windows we wanted. The supplier went in and measured and did all that stuff, and showed exactly what he would order when putting the order together. So I put that together, 22 windows, double pane, fiberglass inserts. We're trying to schedule this around art center activities, bidding for the windows and contractors simultaneously, rather than contractors going out to get the windows, just to make sure we know where the windows are coming from, and trying to local source this as well. One of the, one of the suppliers said it would only take two weeks to get the normal square windows in, and a little longer for the cathedral-style windows, because they're specially formed. I already have one contractor who didn't even know, well, he kind of knew I was going up, we were going out to bid, but had already approached me for this project, so they were, because he talked to Wayne about it already, so he knew what the questions I was asking and all that, so I requested to go up to bid.
The only thing is, you guys, you guys okay with this November-December windows?
Don't take long to pop a window out and in, though.
Yeah, these are the inserts, so that, I was told by a trusted contractor that just left, that they take out the blocks, the window blocks, take out the window, put the window in, and put the blocks back.
And should be no problem?
Should be no problem.
In November-December?
November-December.
That was my link.
And I did, I specifically asked Wayne when the art center would be available for this, and he said those two months.
Okay. Is there a motion?
Move to approve, going out for bids for the Lee Dam Art Center.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? 8-0, all right.
All right. Next, I included the bids from the City Hall Bathroom remodel project. I also had a clarification set on your desk from All Things Construction. Like I said in my, in my agenda here, that I was, the information I got from All Things Construction was over the phone. I asked him to put it in writing, and it took a little longer for him to put it in writing, and this is what he actually put together, because what he initially inserted or sent in to me was confusing. So I gave him a chance, he doesn't, he did not see the bids otherwise, because he was somewhere else, on a vacation or something. And so I can guarantee he did not see what everybody else was bidding, so I wanted to make sure what he bid was right, because, especially since that number he, I initially came up with was really low compared to everybody else. So the number, you add all this together, it's $26,150, and he said, whatever selection we choose, whether we do the epoxy floor or the tile floors, this is what would cover it. He did give himself, as he explained, $1,000 as a buffer, and he didn't have to give us that information, but he said if it's cheaper than this number, then he will charge us less.
I think the big difference in the bids is that he's doing all the electrical work, where the other companies.
And the plumbing, other than soldering the, other than soldering the copper pipe, which he would get subcontractor for that portion of it, he's doing everything else.
And what's his timeframe?
He doesn't have one, and that's a negative.
That's concerning.
That is a concern on my, on my half as well.
Especially since one person.
I technically asked him for it three times, and he didn't give it to me, so that is a concern of mine as well.
Just to let you know that, in the budget, it was, budget is $30,000, so that's what's in the budget. And, you know, the big difference, again, is that the other two bidders were gonna bid out the electrical and sewer, where he's gonna do it.
That really makes a lot of difference in the bid.
But, you know, if it, timetable being unknown, what's a couple thousand dollars worth to be done in X many days versus an unknown quantity of days?
$10,000.
$10,000.
$10,000.
But it could be eight weeks, it could be 12 weeks.
I don't think so.
Well, I don't think so either, there's a lot of projects, though, that go over on time, especially if it's not been prescribed in the bid.
Where's All Things from?
He, he lives, as far as I knew, he lives in Home City. He also has a home in North Carolina, so that's, that's one of those things. He did put his North Carolina address on there, which doesn't exactly help my opinion. He worked out at Home City when we used him for the Lakeview Ball Complex.
I think he's from here, is he?
Yeah.
His brother lives there, too.
Matt G is his name.
Okay.
His parents live in Home City, and he has a brother that lives in Home City.
Which might be doing the work with him, you never know.
They work together, they work, they did, they did the house across the street from us, they rent it out, so.
Yeah.
They do very good work.
And he, in his new document, he did say he was an Onyx bathroom material dealer, which is beneficial, and he's done, he says he's done other renovations, and as Diane has pointed out, she's seen him work on houses, so, yeah, so, I mean, that's.
Sounds good to me.
Is that a motion, Terry?
I don't know why the hurry is about this City Hall to begin with, but that's the only reason I wouldn't make a motion, I just thought, I know we could get by here forever the way it is without doing anything, so I, we'd like to make a motion that if we're gonna do it, yes, that All Things Construction gets the chance for it.
So is that your final motion?
Yes.
I just wanted to make sure that was indeed a motion.
Yeah.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion?
Have we gone into any other projects where it was a completely open-ended timeframe? Any, literally any other project that we have where we have literally no idea how long it'll be, 10 days or 10 weeks?
Kessler House.
Well, that's a little bit of.
So, that's something. This, yeah, but this, you're correct. This is one of those projects where I did put the bid together, where we didn't know where it would end, but I did, that's one of my, tried to make my sticking point, I wanted to know how long it would take. And it does bother me that he did not put a project timeframe in there.
When you would ask him about it, what was his response?
He didn't say.
Well, I mean, but did he dither, or did he say, well, who knows?
I think, no, he didn't say, well, who knows? He didn't dither, yeah, he didn't, it kind of, he kind of transitioned into something else. He answered one of my other questions that he had answered before, and we just never got back to it. And it was one of those, I got the bid in, and I needed to talk to him, and then I left a few voicemails on his, because he was traveling to North Carolina.
Can we keep this? I'm real, thinking this is a little shaky, personally, but this, maybe he needs to know, we need a timeframe of you, and you, and you, we decided as a council to have you do the work, but until we get a timeframe, you know, is it legal to do that?
Pass it pending timeframe approved by the administrator.
There you go. I mean, that we can pin him down, and if he says, oh, you know, I get back from Florida in March, you know.
It's almost less to do with how long it is versus just knowing.
When it's.
Yeah, yeah.
Because you can plan around it, but if you have no idea how long it's gonna be, it's hard to plan around.
Right. I'd be fine with that, I'll pin, I can pin him down pretty soon.
Are you talking about how long it's gonna take, or how long it's gonna be before he does it?
How long it's gonna take.
How long it's gonna take. I want to know from here to here, because, I mean, like, in one of my descriptions, I think I said, I would, I would prefer one contractor over the other, even though one contractor was 1,000, well, not quite $1,000 less, but the fact that one had 12 working days versus the other had four to five weeks to complete it, and that was.
I think that four to five weeks, though, when you look at their bid, they said that it would take three weeks to get the material. it would take three weeks to get the materials. But I, I thought that at first, too, but I read his bid again, and I don't have it written, and it, it kind of persuaded me the other way.
Oh, okay.
Well, I'd move to amend.
Wait. Doesn't he have to change his amendment, his motion?
I can move to amend the motion.
His motion?
Yeah. I move to amend the motion to include city administrator approval of project timeframe.
Second.
Since it was your motion. I think I've wasted the person that made the motion, amend the motion. So you caught me off guard.
They can. I don't think that happened.
Okay. So now we have a motion and a second pending your, your approval of the timeframe. If not, you'll bring it back to council?
Yes, I will.
Okay. Is there any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eight oh, all right.
Next one up is our computer replacement we have scheduled for this year. Attaches a bid request to replace the desktop, desktop computers in City Hall and the Police Department. This does not include the servers, which are in decent shape right now and don't see a need to replace. This is planned replacement and happens to coincide with the international, intentional obsolescence of the operating systems by Microsoft on all our desktop, desktop computers. So Microsoft will no longer support the operating systems on the desktops as of December 31st of this year. And that kind of leaves a whole open end for, for our computers. So it, it kind of works out.
It's robbery. It's robbery.
Yep. Hands up.
Yes, it is.
It is.
Pretty much.
So is the, I noticed that the desktops for the police have twice the capacity as the one at City Hall. I assume that's on purpose?
It, it is. Because they down, they upload a whole bunch more stuff from, from their devices onto their computers. Currently, the City Hall computers are ready, that's a standard 500 gig. So our, our City Hall computers already have that 512. We're downgrading because we don't use that much space. So it's, that was kind of the standard computer, was the 512. So we lessen that space for us.
So 256 is sufficient for City Hall?
Yes.
And I assume all our, our current operating systems, like that new census for the water meters and all that, can work with these computers?
Yes.
And so all existing software can continue?
Yes. Yep.
Okay. Did you guys have any questions for Austin?
So none of our computers will be any good anymore that we have now.
Right. The operating systems are, yeah, they're just not, they're not going to-
Well, they won't be supported.
They won't, they won't be supported. They won't supply any more updates, patches, or anything like that. So they, basically, yeah, basically, they're-
You can wait till a problem occurs, but I don't know if that's the right thing for us as a city to do. So, so does someone desire to approve that bid proposal?
That was in the budget, correct, for this year?
Yeah, for this year, yep.
Moved to approve, going out for bids on new computers for City Hall and the Police Department.
Is there a second?
A second.
Is there any further discussion?
So where are you going out for bids for?
I'm going to put it on the website. I'm going to use Blue Valley NCS, since we already do work with them, and whoever else wants a bid.
I just wondered where you, how many places you had to go out for bids for.
We have a whole month, September 18th. So hopefully, we'll get some offers, more than just one bid.
Right.
Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eight oh.
All right. Next one up is water and sewer department hiring. We already had a discussion earlier in the year, at least the Water Committee did, about hiring one of our seasonals. And that, that was before we found out that Dave Hammett is actually retiring this year. He's setting every, all his ducks in a row. So it's, it's kind of inevitable that he's leaving at the end of the year. So we wanted to make sure it would be okay to hire both of our seasonal employees. And Randy Sue Kent, he, at, at first, he, he wanted to hire, if we could only hire one of them, he, he had one in mind, but he also said the other one works really well, too. So both of them work well in our system and have learned very well over the, over the summer. So I just wanted to make sure you guys would be okay to, to also plan ahead on this, to, to make sure we're right in line and not miss out on a quality employee.
And it's good that we had them as seasonals. So it's kind of an audition for the regular gig.
See if they can work.
Yeah. And that's kind of the idea we had with the seasonals this year, to see if we can train them into a spot.
Did they show up for work?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, no, they don't.
Some of the ones in the highlights, we, people are not showing up. And I want to make sure these guys are showing up, if you're going to hire them.
These guys are, these guys are the hard workers. These guys are hard workers. They do show up. And I, I don't think Kent would recommend hiring them if they weren't showing up for work.
Okay. I, you know, so is one of them going to do Dave Hammett's job?
Tony's taking over Dave Hammett's job right now. He's doing the training and stuff like that. So-
Well, he's our, our certified guy. Isn't he certified in sewer and not water, or is it the other way around?
He's in sewer, not water, yes.
And so we, and Kent's the only one that's certified.
In water. Kent's got both.
So, I mean, we need to get, if you're going to let Tony go off and do what Dave has been doing, we need to get those other guys certified. Kevin, maybe, or?
Right.
Are you working on that?
Yeah, we're, we're, yes. There are, some of them are certified, I forget how many-
Delmer has some.
Delmer has some certification.
Yeah, and on the water, I think. And Kevin, I think has- Kevin's water.
Kevin's got water. Yeah, they, some of them do have certification, yes.
Okay. All right. Are you guys, so from a budgeting standpoint, I think-
Once we hit the year end, I think we're better. Don't take this the wrong way.
You're going to hire him now.
Right. We're already paying, we're already paying him right now.
Are they full-time now?
They-
But they don't have all the benefits. I mean, you add the benefit cost and the capers cost, that's a lot more-
That's quite a bit, yeah. So it would-
So you're going to be overlapping September, October?
Right. One of them's already taken, would already be taking an open spot. And then the, the other one would be basically a backfill while Hammett's transitioning to retirement.
Yeah. Well, you need to keep an eye on overtime, then, because I know we've had more expenses and salaries on, you know, on water and sewer. And we're using those monies for water lines. So-
Right. Yeah, the, yes.
You're sure we can afford it and in the 2020 budget?
Yeah. And in fact, once we hit 2020, because we're losing Hammett, and this is, because since he's been here so long, it's transitioning to somebody who's going to be lesser paid is-
Yeah. But now we have double benefits. For two, I mean, you're, have two that are both a bit less than the full-time person, but you have double benefits, double capers and all that.
Right. But we would only go back to where we were, because right now, we, we have that one open slot. And, and we had that whole, that slot open for all of last year. So that, I mean, that's, we're kind of going back to normal where we were in 2017, 2016.
That'd be at least 16. We haven't had anybody in that slot for a couple of years.
But remember when we were looking at the 90-day carryovers?
Two days.
We were looking at the 90-day carryovers for water sewer in the 2020 budget.
Okay. I'll keep an eye on it.
But if we didn't need anybody in 2016, 2017, we got along, then why then?
That's not saying we didn't need anybody.
Well, we got along fine without them.
Ted, did you end up with a lot of overtime because you're down?
Only, only when we had, when do we have those force main breaks?
Those force main breaks.
Those force main breaks, really.
Otherwise.
Yeah.
So do we really need another person?
Yes.
Okay. As long as they're showing up for work and they're working, and they're willing, they're willing to work. I mean, we don't pay them a great deal. They have great benefits, and they have great retirement. So, all right. Are you, should we, do you want to make, you want a motion, a consensus of council? What do you want?
Just, as long as nobody has any issues.
Anybody have any issues? Consensus of council to move forward with hiring two? Yes?
Yes.
All right.
I think I announced my last thing, which they're closing Walnut, and I'm not sure I have anything else.
Did we give you a timeframe for Highway 36?
No.
To the east?
They didn't, other than what's in the paper, they did not communicate anything with us.
Are they going west anymore?
I think they started, they just started, they started west and gone east.
Yeah, to the Vermillion, or the, yeah, Belits Corner.
Oh, to the Belits.
They're going east all the way there.
Yeah.
All the way to Belits.
Well, it'll be really nice when it's done, but it could be really chaos.
I thought I saw October for the end of the problem.
As long as I get past 12th Road. Get past Walmart. Get past Walmart.
You're almost there.
That'll help our, the residents in Maricopa.
I think I am good.
They were out there watching the weather and all that.
Yes.
I have one question for the administrator. And that's, have you, have you talked or informed your staff about the fact that we got a city election coming up this fall, and that they're not supposed to publicly endorse any candidate?
They know that's the rule. Yes.
Well, I noticed down at by the high school, there's a sign in one of your department heads.
That's not on his property. That's not his property. It belongs to the house south of it.
I'm very sorry, then. I thought it was his property.
I, I noticed that, and I figured that would be a question.
Yeah, no.
All right. All right. Cindy, you're up.
Oh, yeah. When you guys go to league conference, we have to decide on who's going to be the voting delegate?
We have a meeting that night, and the, the meeting is at 3 o'clock.
And that's on which night?
Monday night.
Monday night.
Yeah. It's always when that happens.
So I would, Bobby and Jason, you're both going. Would you stay and be the delegates?
Sure.
I mean, unless you want to, Diane, I'm going to, I'm going to head back.
Well, I guess they're, if you ask them, that's fine.
I, I'm sorry. Who would like, who would like to be a voting delegate and stay for the 3 o'clock meeting?
I'll stay.
I will, too.
You want to be, you want to be an alternate?
You did yours.
I don't know.
Is it two?
I think it's a-
You're two plus an alternate.
Yeah, I have to have two plus an alternate. So it's going to take all three of you, probably, unless, well, unless they-
You want to be an alternate, Diane?
No.
Well, then you two can't knock, get sick.
All right.
Why not like this?
If you really want to be, I'm sure one of them will bow out.
That's fine. If they decided they wanted to, you ask them. So that's fine.
Okay. My apologies. Okay, page 40.
Can I make you the alternate if you don't need him to be there?
Yeah, if you need an alternate.
I mean, I think I have to have-
Okay. Put Diane and I in as alternates, so you can know we don't want to be.
Okay. I was going to say, I think I have to have somebody.
Okay.
Okay. All right. That's number one. And then number two, you asked me to come up with those costs of what it cost us for the last two vehicles. We moved from the Police Department to the, to a different department.
From the PD to another department?
Yeah, from the Police Department when we got their vehicles. And that's what the last two cost us.
Yeah. Chief left, huh?
He has fancy lights. He had to have in radios for his fire stuff that we put in. And actually, we pay to put them in. We put them in Joe's, but when we did Donnie's, we have to, we put them in their personal vehicles, too, some of that. Special radios, because they are the fire.
Emergency.
They have to be able to communicate with whatever. So that's what, and they switch lights.
And then the one to the street department, it was just changing lights.
Yeah. The street department did a lot of their, their own work.
Well, he didn't need that.
And this exterior lighting was easy to run on the dump trucks, or not the, not dump trucks, but the, for them. Yeah, they, they don't do-
Didn't need fancy lights and stuff, he said. They just needed the yellow light, and they switched it out to themselves.
Well, Darlene and I found Kent at the office today. So we looked at what, what, when he, we made him show us what $3,500 went for. And I think the main part of it was the console. They took the whole console out. So he had to put a console back. And then he showed how he swapped the lights from the red lights to yellow lights. And what else did he do? Oh, the interior, when they took the cage out, he had to put stuff back because they were stripped down. What else did he say?
No, there's the lights, the, the pieces for the cage that were there, the, yeah, that console. Because when you rip out, when you get a police vehicle brand new, there's nothing there. And the reason for that is so the, whatever police department can do what they need to and put their equipment right in there. So when they take the police equipment out, there's nothing there again. So that console, to fit the radio, the, the switches for the lights, and all that system in there was probably one of the bigger costs on.
So anyway-
Besides labor.
That was the $3,500. But, you know, you know, you have to sit there and say, well, the street department, you know, be thankful the street department did their own. They said it wasn't pretty, but they did their own. So, do you guys have any other questions for Cindy? All right. Street, questions for street? Water, wastewater? I was just-
One on the street.
Okay.
When do they plan on chip ceiling?
They were planning tomorrow. They were working on issues with the oiler. They've been working on it for the last week. But shoot one, they were, they were trying to do tomorrow. I, I didn't check in with Gary to see if he had all the issues, but sometime this week-
Is it too wet now? They have to wait a day or two?
Uh, they were anticipating it to kind of dry out.
By tomorrow?
So they were just, they were preparing. It probably wasn't going to be tomorrow, but we were hoping, we were hoping this week for shoot one.
Okay.
Yep.
That's great. Oh, great. We're going to walk another street in Kansas.
Up several streets.
People are going to hear that.
Hey, that one goes pretty fast, though.
Where is that one going?
I would have to look back at the map, because it's like multiple blocks in different directions.
Here, here, here.
Okay. All right. Water, wastewater? I was just really glad to read in the highlights that they found that water leak during the CIPP. They inadvertently found the water leak and fixed it. So that was, that could have been some of our major water loss. So I'm so excited.
Yep. Yep. They, one, we had KRWA putting sensors around, and they kind of heard it, but they couldn't pinpoint it. And then when they were going to line a specific line, they had the camera in there, and one of the, one of the services were just flushing out water. And they thought, and that was not normal. So-
It was going straight.
All, all the water, yeah, all the water was just going straight.
From the water to the sewer line.
Yeah. So we, we wouldn't, we wouldn't have seen it otherwise.
Yeah. So hopefully, that's some of our $24 million water loss. So I was really glad that they found that. If they can find more, that would be great. Any water, wastewater? Parks Rec?
I don't know if this is in Parks Rec, but the gravel dash will be coming up. And I don't know that the new chamber director knows that bicyclists in the past have put their bikes up on the, by the pony statue. And it's really looking nice there. So maybe we ought to pass that on to him, but not-
Not to put them up on the pony, just by the pony?
Yeah. Ben Skinner and, well, Diane spends a lot of time, too. Ben Skinner spends hours.
To make it look nice, yeah.
To make it look nice. In fact, all the, well, some street corridor and the garden by the park, and then the, the hill, Water Tower Hill, all of them look beautiful.
They do great. We've had all that water this year. Will you communicate that to Bob? With the chamber? Okay.
I have one. Somebody just mentioned to me that if we should have a shade structure or some sort of, something for the lady that sits out at the dump, out of the-
The what?
The brush dump.
A shade structure?
I don't know.
She sits in a car.
I don't know. They just said that she was, when it was really, really hot there, she was sitting in her car, and she looked like she was going to melt. I don't know. And I was like, okay, I will bring it up.
We'll check with her to make sure.
I have one more for Parks and Rec.
Okay.
On September 18th, the guy that wants to do the stormwater at Lakeview wants to have a meeting with the Parks and Rec Committee in that evening, if that would work with anybody. Is that Parks and Rec, or is that?
That's Parks and Rec.
So I didn't know if it was water or-
So Schwab Eden?
Mm-hmm. That's when he wants to have the meeting with the Parks and Rec Committee.
When is that?
September 18.
That's a Wednesday.
Is that a Wednesday?
And so he didn't say at night, day?
He said he would do it in the evening.
In the evening, yeah.
But I just didn't know if that worked for you. I wanted to ask first.
Parks and Rec is Gina?
Gina, Jason and Todd?
That's what would work for me, Jason and Todd.
Wednesday night? Okay. Wednesday night, okay.
Okay. Worked 7:00, 6:00, what, what do you?
After 6:00, no, earlier than 6:00.
Okay, all right, I just didn't, I couldn't remember. Okay, so.
All right.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Let's see. Police and Fire, Admin and Finance, I don't have any appointments, I don't know of a reasonable executive session, roundtable discussion, parade ideas, I don't have anything yet, circus themed, you guys gotta help me, circus, tying the city to the circus, help me with that. Remasters, I don't know, I'm trying to work on it. But you have to bring it to the next meeting, 'cause we have to submit it by night, the Wednesday after that.
Our squirrel, I mean, our squirrel is from the circus, so.
Oh.
There you go.
Oh.
You're welcome.
I'll take that paycheck somewhere.
We wouldn't wanna load that squirrel.
It's, that's easy, that's actually an easy thing to do. I forget if, we got it, we have it attached to the wood probably, but if you, if you wanna do that, we can arrange for that to happen, but you could tie your theme around the squirrel.
Circus themed with the squirrels, that's a really good idea.
Does anybody have a-
Be creative.
-squirrel they can put in a cage?
Be creative. Hmm, oh yeah, we could cage, okay, we'll have to think about it. You guys all work on that for the next meeting.
Supposedly they escaped its cage, that's how we got it.
Oh, that's true, we could tie it in. Oh, we'll have to work on that, work on it. Okay, that's all I got. Darlene?
Well, of course, the census is going to be coming up next year, I mentioned that several times, and I met the gal a few weeks ago who is in charge of educating and promoting, and I think Cindy has talked with her. Anyway, she gave me some handouts and I'll share, share them with you all, so you're informed and, because we want everybody to be counted.
Yeah, what, isn't it worth like $2,000 a person, what we don't, the people we don't catch, so it's important.
I didn't even realize you didn't have to sign up. I mean, I always thought, I mean, it always scared me when I got them, they always, fear of God, and you're like, you better be filling this out, I know.
It's the law, that's right. Anything else?
No.
Bobby?
Nope.
Gina?
Gina.
Terry?
No.
Todd?
Yeah, I've had a lot of positive comments about people, the morning swim, Diane probably knows more about me since I don't go to morning swim, but being very thankful that they have that continued opportunity, even if it was abbreviated this morning perhaps, because people seem very happy to have that, so.
Five o'clock one is well attended, better than when it was at noon.
The 5 o'clock?
Yes.
Oh, good.
We've had like 15 most-
Really, from 5:00 to 6:30? Wow, good job. Diane?
Yeah, swim's going very well. Yep, we appreciate it. Thank you, we thank the city for doing it, yes.
For the extra week.
Yes.
They take any day they can get.
Yes, anytime.
Kev?
I have nothing.
Jason?
Good.
All right, I want to enter a motion to adjourn.
To adjourn.